All right, I have seven o'clock. I am going to call our Monday, February 7th meeting to order. Deputy Clerk, good, could you please do a roll call for attendance?
Councilmember Henry.
Glenn Henry, present.
Councilmember Mock.
Present.
Councilmember Sayer. Councilmember McKnight.
Present.
Mayor Johnson.
Present, thank you. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for tuning into tonight's meeting. The City Council is meeting remotely pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section thirteen D point zero two one, due to the ongoing health pandemic. We value our residents and community members, and we want to make sure that anyone who wants to participate and provide input can do so. Those interested in providing comments to the City Council can do so during the regular meeting via Zoom. Information related to joining the Zoom meeting is available on the agenda under the quick link, watch city meetings and view agendas and packets at the bottom of the homepage at cityofcarver.com. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council, wait to be recognized by the mayor, be respectful, wait for your turn to speak, and don't speak over one another. Callers will still need to provide their names and addresses for the record. All right, with that, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
So my remark. And a second by Glenn Henry, who I heard first, sorry, Joy, I think you lost out on that one. Let's see, any further discussion? All right, Deputy Clerk, can you please do a roll call for the motion?
Councilmember Henry.
Hi.
Councilmember Mock.
Hi, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Hi, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Hi, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Hi, Courtney Johnson, all right, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number four, community comment, which is for anything that is not on the agenda. And it looks like we don't have anyone from the community participating in tonight's Zoom, so we will move on. There are no presentations and reports, there are no public hearings, moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thanks, Glenn. We'll give that one to Councilmember McKnight.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Henry, any further discussion? All right, Deputy Clerk, good, could you please do the roll call for the motion?
Councilmember Henry.
Hi.
Councilmember Mock.
Hi, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Hi, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Hi, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
I, Courtney Johnson, all right, motion passes unanimously. Rolling right along to business items, number eight point one, the Great River Greening Grant Agreement, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a request before you to authorize a grant agreement with Great River Greening for some work to be completed at Creekside Park. So I'm going to talk a little bit about both Great River Greening and Creekside. And then Dave and I are available for questions, he reviewed the grant agreement. If you have specific questions related to legal impact of the agreement. So Creekside Park has been identified through the Park Master Plan process as a site that we would like to redevelop as a park, so historically, it's been used for a water treatment facility, currently be being used for public services storage. With the space study, we've identified some additional space at the public services facility that can facilitate the storage that's being held here at the site. So moving some of that equipment and storage up to public services allows the site to be redeveloped. So we are directly adjacent to the bluffs off Jonathan Carver Parkway and Main Street in Carver. So we've seen a couple of versions of Creekside Park, we've gone back and forth on some options that might be there. So as you'll recall, there have been a couple of options in the to be programmed area. So right now, we're leaving that area open to be programmed, hopefully by the Parks Advisory Group as well as the City Council and Planning Commission. Originally, we had a yardway site, but I think that need has been filled by others at this point. And then sledding hill, which we realized was in violation of our bluff ordinance, which was sad for everyone, but important work. So we have some open space that we can continue to program as we think through this park, what it looks like and what's important to the community. So just a little refresher, this park right now has a nine-hole disc golf course. So we've through some areas of the park and along the creek, as well as a dog park that is split for both large and small dogs. So a need that we've heard a lot from in the community and look forward to having, hopefully as part of our parks system. So a little bit about Great River Greening, so it's a St. Paul-based nonprofit that began in nineteen ninety-five. And from their city's website and mission statement, they're Minnesota's leader in community-based restoration devoted solely to stewardship. So a program that relies heavily on community involvement and partnering with other groups in the state of Minnesota. So Great River Greening has restored twenty-two thousand acres of natural resources through four hundred sites, and again, has strong partners across the state of Minnesota. This was one of those examples of the grant email blasts that we get pretty often as city staff saying, hey, we have money available, do you have an idea? And we reached out and said that we're working on this park, and we were able to form a partnership with Great River Greening to move forward with some restoration that's required and needed at Creekside Park. So a little bit of history of the council with Great River Greening, so in April of twenty twenty, you authorized a letter of support for the grant applications to be applied for with Great River Greening. So we partnered with them for that application. And applications were made to the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund and the Outdoor Heritage Fund. So through that application, we found out recently that we were awarded just under three hundred thousand dollars from the Outdoor Heritage Fund and about sixty-eight thousand dollars from the Environment and Natural Resource Trust Fund for work in Creekside Park. So as part of this grant agreement, there are a few components that we'll need to meet. So there's a park dedication match required of thirty thousand dollars and then some community work that I'm really looking forward to, hopefully with the Parks Advisory Group. So getting community members in there to do some of the work with Great River Greening. So what did we apply for, what did we get money for, what does this all mean? So the biggest piece of funding goes to stream bank stabilization. So something that Great River Greening is really passionate about is water quality. So thinking about getting that stream in a spot where it's more stable to limit erosion and like fertilizer from going into the creek. Flood plain, so the site prep and seeding, I think I have the park in another site, and I'll point out the general area where the flood plain is. And then a lot of it is removal of invasive species. So thinking through some woody invasives that are in that area that could really impact the park long term if we continue to not do anything about the issue. A lovely thing that I love about this grant agreement is that Great River Greening will do the grant administration. So it takes that off our plate, something that they are experts at, which is really helpful for us. The project will be phased, so thinking through park dedication right now, we just authorized work for Ironwood Park. So we are thinking the work will be completed by twenty twenty-six. So between now and then, this work can be completed, and I think we'll do a pretty large refining process of Creekside Park within that timeframe, too. Just knowing that there's space to be programmed and then partnering with Great River Greening to think about the space. So we don't end up with clearing in a spot that we were hoping for an obstacle for the frisbee golf course. So between now and twenty twenty-six, we'll continue to work with them, both on the work that they're proposing in the park, but making sure it meets the goals of what we have in our Parks Master Plan. So the floodplain area is generally the area here where the frisbee golf course will go. So a lot of it is clearing of invasives in this area. The space that currently is being used for storage is upland right now, so thinking through what might go there. We have a few less restrictions where the floodplain is in this general area. So again, tonight, the request is to authorize a grant agreement with Great River Greening for work at Creekside Park. Questions and comments are welcome.
Mrs. Smith, I have a question.
Go ahead.
For the to be programmed, is that an open timeframe? Is that like a certain phase within projects or the grant, you know, either asking forward or accepting one, or is that something that can just be years down the road? And I realize it said phase project, I think twenty twenty-six, so.
Yeah, there's no requirement in the grant agreement to have that area programmed. So I think we will take some feedback from the New Park Advisory Group. And then we hear from residents pretty regularly about some needs and wants that they would have in the parks. So I think it would be, there's not an end date for it, obviously by twenty twenty-six, we'd want to know generally what's going in there, but we don't have a set date for it right now.
Thank you.
Any questions? Comments about the grant agreement, go ahead, Joy.
Um, so. Okay, so the grant agreement is, just to make sure I understand this, this is to help prepare the site to become a long-term park, right? It's to stabilize the creek area such that if we do develop this as a park, right? The creek is not going to cause issues with that, with the surrounding areas in the park that we want to remove invasive species, kind of prep it, can I say that? Is that the right way to think about this? Because, you know, with this grant, we're not getting a nine-hole disc golf course, right? That's a separate project where we use park dedication funds to actually develop this as a park. This grant is really to help make sure the the space is really prepared for that future development as a park. Is that a fair way to say it, Erin?
Yes, one hundred percent, I think, thinking about it as prep work for the park is a really good way to think about it.
Okay, because, you know, you mentioned, well, let's make sure, like, you know, the plan for some of the trees and seeding kind of aligns with what our plans are for the ultimate development as a park. We don't want them in conflict because we don't want to do something with this grant that we then decide to remove later, right? Okay, so that was just one clarification I wanted to make. I certainly want to be, I know you mentioned getting the Parks Advisory Board involved in volunteers. I'd like to, too, just especially since this is adjacent to my neighborhood. As we think about that, it's, that's a really great, exciting opportunity for people to get involved in the community. So I really like that aspect of this as well, that grant. So I don't think I have any other questions about the grant. Well, okay, so one more, so as we do phases of this and coordinate with the Great River Greening on the details, will we be reviewing this, like with Parks Commission, just to make sure the activities are aligned with what we planned for the park or how we're thinking of that park space in the future?
So I think we'll move forward with the general design for what we have in the Parks Master Plan right now. I don't think a lot of the work is going to impact the design that we have. A majority of it is going to be creek-related, so we may need to think about the layout of some of the frisbee golf course. But what we have here is a pretty rough draft, we haven't spent a ton of time in this concept, just a general idea. So once we drill into that more, we'll know how we can coordinate better. But I don't think any of the work that we'll do with Great River Greening would impact the ability to develop this park.
Okay. Did we, when we talked about the Parks Master Plan, did we have a timeline for this park?
We did not.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Hey, Chrissy, you're next, hey Lori, can you turn the camera on, please? Lori? Thank you, all right, go ahead, Chrissy.
Um, piggybacking on what I just said, when we were talking about the timeline for this park.
I need to switch devices, so I'm going to be on twice.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the Parks Master Plan, Erin, you just stated that we didn't have a general timeline set for this park, right? So when we have the thirty thousand dollar match that's required from park dedication dollars, is that affecting any of the other parks that we had planned possibly earlier than this one?
So we have Ironwood, and then I think we're going to start tackling the downtown park. So we'll need to think about that in funding, but with the development that we're seeing within the next two years and then up until twenty twenty-six, I'm not super concerned with the park dedication fund right now.
Okay, because that was going to be my next question, we've talked about doing the downtown park. So I just wanted to make sure that if we were going to, we're flipping timeframes here that we know what we're getting into, and we know that we have other timelines set out than for what we'd be looking at for the downtown park. Can you tell me, if offhand, what year we were talking about the downtown park?
I think completion twenty twenty-six.
Okay, okay, so this may set, this may set that back, is that a fair assumption to think if we, I mean, I understand that if we can get this grant money to do this, I think this is a great project. I think Great River Green is a fantastic organization, so I'm glad that we got this. But I just want to be realistic in our funding capacity for things so that we are not maybe having to find funding, and we can use, you know, park dedication or whatever we had set in place before, rather than trying, having to look at more, more bonds, more things like that.
I think I'm not concerned with the thirty thousand and then the downtown park going at the same time. I think if we're going for full development of both projects, we might have a little hesitation. But I think just doing site prep here and then focusing downtown park dedication should be okay.
Okay. And then this is a little off track of this one, but I, maybe something we could talk about later in time. When we talked about the sledding hill, that we couldn't do that because of our bluff ordinance, does that mean we can never have a sledding hill because of our bluff ordinance?
So we were advocating to add some fill to this park to create a sledding hill, but it impacted a portion of the bluff, so we're going to keep trying, we're going to find a spot. But we were looking to add a pretty significant amount of fill to make it more, less of a bunny hill and more of a full-blown sledding hill. So that was the restriction.
Okay. Okay, so that we, we have lots of hills in town, but they're fairly used at this point, or there, a house is right there, or a neighborhood is right there. Is I don't know about exempting ourselves from our own ordinance, but I don't know how we're going to make this ever happen if we don't be intentional about something.
I will say adding fill in the bluff is pretty explicit in the ordinance, that it's something you can't do. But I think we could find a park that doesn't have a bluff, or we could potentially add fill to make a great sledding hill someday.
Okay, because we've been talking about this for a long time, and I think that Courtney wants to go sledding. So I think we should find a way to make that happen. I, I think that is all of my questions, thank you.
Uh, thanks for asking that question, Christie, you know how much I appreciate it. Glenn, anything from you? Nothing from Glenn, Lori, anything from you? All right. Erin, the only questions that I have, I love the volunteer component of this and the volunteer project and get our folks out there and literally get their hands dirty and volunteer and be put to work for something like this, I love that. The question that I had is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for stream bank stabilization. I remember looking at potentially doing a stabilization project along the Minnesota River in Riverside Park. And I realize projects of scale, but is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars enough to take care of the needs for the stream in that area? Or will we just tackle what we can do?
Great River Greening actually put together the site budget, and I trust their numbers far more than I think what we would put together. So I'm trusting that they used information from other projects and parks that they worked on to come to that budget number. So I can't say yes, definitely, because I didn't put that number together. But I do trust that they elicited the correct resources to figure out what that budget needed to be.
Okay. That is it for me, does anybody else have any questions, comments?
I have one more, since you brought that up, Courtney. So looking at Riverside Park, is there, is there a chance to look at Great River Greening to about with stabilization of that bank as well?
So Brent actually forwarded me another email from Great River Greening, looking for a similar project. So I reached out to Todd just to say, would you ever fund two projects in the same community at the same time? So I haven't heard back, but we can definitely provide an update when I get more information.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion to approve this grant agreement?
I will make a motion the grant, sorry, the Great River Greening Cooperative Agreement.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Mock and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Deputy Clerk, good, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Henry.
Hi, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
I, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
I, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
I, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
I, Courtney Johnson, all right, the motion passed unanimously. Moving on to eight point two, thank you, Erin, the fire services agreement, Merrick.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, so happy to present two agreements, one with Dogren Township and one with San Francisco Township for your consideration. The city for many years has provided fire services to parts of both Dogren and San Francisco Township, which is traditionally run through a five-year agreement. Our current agreement expired in twenty twenty-one. We did provide some documentation, just doing a kind of interim services, knowing that we were at the tail end of some negotiating. A lot of work had went in previous to my time in the city, putting together a pretty, pretty solid formula related to how costs are split using three primary variables, population, calls for service, and tax base of each participating entity. It roughly breaks out to the city paying sixty percent of the costs, and then Dogren and San Francisco paying forty percent. There is a little bit of a change from that formula or a departure from that formula related to capital expenses, so for vehicles and apparatus, as well as building, so vehicles and apparatus or fire engines, if you will. Although the city would traditionally borrow that money through an equipment certificate over ten years, the townships are afforded the ability to pay for that over twenty years. Excuse me, the city isn't charging any interest rate over that amortization schedule. Similarly, for the fire station or other buildings that is spread out over forty years at zero percent interest. And that has been done for, at least for probably the last fifteen years. So that was an area that staff identified. I negotiated this with Fire Chief Kelly Trimble and then representatives from the township. We identified a need to really try to kind of look at that in some, in some additional detail. And the township representatives are great to work with in that regard. And so kind of what I would say as the compromise moving forward that you could, that you'll see memorialized in the proposed agreements is that the townships would pay on vehicles and equipment or apparatus these, on the same debt service schedule that the city has. So if we borrowed a million dollars over ten years at three and a half, three and a half percent interest, they'd pay their prorated share, so, you know, in the case of San Francisco, it's usually around, you know, anywhere from thirteen to fifteen percent approximately. They'd pay their prorated share with interest over that ten-year period as opposed to the twenty-year at no interest. As kind of a, in exchange for that, what the, the agreement calls for is that the townships would not have any future on new buildings commit financial commitment, so i.e. for, for example, the turnout year building addition that we're planning, they would not have any financial obligation to that. So all the existing cities debt service, as you can see in the table that's included in your memo, stays the same. And you can see Dogren and San Francisco's prorated share for that going forward. But on new buildings and new equipment, we would be using the proposed terms within that. So Dave Anderson, the city attorney, prepared the agreements. And both boards of supervisors for Dogren and San Francisco Townships have already adopted the proposed agreement, so happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Lori, do you have a question? Oh, you have your hand raised. Okay, council, any questions? Comments, thoughts, motions?
I just want to come in, that's being the liaison for the Township Fire Board. That, obviously, we talked about this at our meeting, and they were very agreeable to it. So thanks to everybody who worked on this and Kelly Trimble, because it seems to be going well, and everyone seems to be satisfied with it, so thank you. And with that, I'll make a motion to adopt a fire, the fire services agreement with Dogren Township.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second that.
A second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All right, Deputy Clerk, good, do please call the roll.
Councilmember Henry.
Hi, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
I, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer. Councilmember Sayer.
Sorry, I, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
I, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
I, Courtney Johnson, motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to adopt a fire services agreement with San Francisco Township.
Second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mock and a second by Councilmember Henry, any further discussion? All right, Deputy Clerk, good, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Henry.
Hi, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
I, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
I, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
I, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
I, Courtney Johnson, motion passes unanimously on that one, too, thank you all. All right, eight point three, the Support of Housing and Local Decision-Making Authority Resolution one oh four dash twenty-two, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so this is a resolution for your consideration that was authored by the League of Minnesota Cities. Some kind of background on this issue, a number of years ago, a trade association formed an advocacy kind of group to look at some disputes they had related to fees and charges charged by cities related to building inspections and planning. There are several points within these reports that are, have been contested with the League of Minnesota Cities kind of serving as the chief advocate for cities on these issues. Trying to kind of confront misinformation, building a legislative coalition, identifying proposed legislation that would impact cities. And ultimately, there, kind of the report that was prepared by this advocacy group has led to, I would say, a surge in legislative action or possible legislative action in St. Paul related to how building permits are reviewed, charged, et cetera. And so a resolution of support's been prepared for your consideration, supporting housing and local decision-making authorities, so i.e. the City Council. If adopted, we'd send this along to the legal, as well as our representative Jim Nash and Senator Julia Coleman. In your packet, I've also included several documents and articles from the League of Minnesota Cities related to a kind of a whole spectrum of issues and potential legislation related to this issue. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, council? No. Just to kind of piggyback off of what Brent said, I think that this is important because it also supports a really, a couple of strong themes in our legislative priorities for twenty twenty-two. So I think that this is something that we should be signing. With that, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one oh four dash twenty-two in support of housing and local decision-making authority.
I'll second.
A motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember McKnight, any further discussion? Deputy Clerk, good, could you please do a roll call for the motion?
Councilmember Henry.
Hi, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
I, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
I, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
I, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
I, Courtney Johnson, motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, communications, Mr. Merrick, do you have anything for communications?
Uh, just what I, I know the council's aware of, I know we've put some stuff out on social media, but the, the replacement lights, if you will, for the Jonathan Carver Parkway project are in the process of going up. And it happens to coincide with kind of some of the last work to some of the monumentation that the JCP Corridor Committee worked on. And so kind of a silver lining to some of these really cold winter days is seeing is seeing this corridor take shape the way that a lot of folks had envisioned it. So really exciting next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Um, council member updates? Joy, anything from you?
Um, the only interesting stat I have from our recent Southwest Transit meeting is that the tallies for total ridership for twenty twenty-one are in. So they had about two hundred and nine thousand riders across the various services in twenty twenty-one, which was actually another drop from twenty twenty, so another almost sixteen percent drop year over year from twenty twenty. But keep in mind that, you know, they essentially reduced express service dramatically from April twenty twenty through August twenty twenty-one, so that was most of twenty twenty-one. So that's a large portion of the reason why it's down so much. So, um, you know, they're starting to see some of the express ridership come back a little bit, but there's still so many companies that are fully work from home that it has not rebounded in the way that they had hoped and expected just because of Omicron. And, um, you know, companies, I think, continuing to be more cautious. So we'll see how the rest of twenty twenty-two goes, but that's, uh, my update.
Thank you. Christie?
Yeah, I have a question for Erin, um, talking about the Jonathan Carver Parkway Project. But along with that, the historical sign marker that we at the agency have been looking at, it's on Sixth Street. That's to be a double-sided sign like the rest of them. However, where it is placed there, you're going to fall down the hill if you try to read the backside. So, uh, how many plans on where that might be better located or what we're going to do? Because, uh, I think having a double-sided sign is fantastic. But I would like people to be able to read both sides without tumbling down a new sledding hill.
Yeah, I learned that information a little bit too late. So we're adding an additional kiosk at the top of Snake Trail. So we've been thinking through potentially having that be a double-sided, reperusing the sign at JCP and Sixth Street to potentially have a little bit of history about Jonathan Carver Parkway. So what it looked like, who Jonathan Carver was, and then also maybe potentially trail mapping. So understanding that that is best used as a single-sided sign. I didn't realize how steep it was until I put my eyes on it and agreed that is not a great idea.
Okay, so the tent now that to have that just be one-sided. And then to add, if I, if I understood you correctly, to add an additional sign about Jonathan Carver?
Nope, so an additional kiosk at Snake Trail. So potentially, um, using the programming that we talked about with the HPC a couple of months ago that we worked through that content at the Snake Trail Kiosk, which will be double-sided.
Okay, and then the single-sided one will be more aimed towards Jonathan Carver and things like that from the Parkway?
That's our plan right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my only other thing is I have a number of thank yous. The Soggy Bottom event was on January twenty-ninth. It was a fantastic turnout. We had a, you know, at least a couple hundred people there, if not a few hundred people there. The weather was gorgeous, which we can't control, so that's always nice when we have that happen. We raised, or donating, we raised and after obviously some of our own expenses, we are donating over fourteen thousand dollars. We raised that, so each family is getting almost seventy-five hundred dollars a piece from this fundraiser. So, um, really proud of our community for coming together and wanna thank everyone who donated, volunteered, attended. Some special thank you is obviously going out to Carver Lions who volunteered and a few other volunteers that aren't even Carver Lions who came out. Um, I wanna thank Carver Fire and Rescue. They spent, um, the day out there with us. And then obviously the City of Carver and Chad Shell and his group were fantastic in helping us get in the site prep down there for the event. So, uh, thanks to everyone, and again, just a fantastic turnout. And when you're raising fourteen thousand dollars, that's pretty amazing in our little, our little community. So thanks to everybody who helped out with that.
Right, thanks, Christie. Glenn?
I have nothing except to thank Christie and the Lions for that fundraiser. Soggy Bottom was a great event. Firemen were down there, they were having fun playing with the fire, so I don't think they were out of their realm. But it was a good time with everybody, and, um, other than that, it was a great event as always, and I'm looking forward to it next year.
Um, yeah, I have some thank yous also, um, to thank the board members and alternates that, um, have been volunteering their time and energy on the Parks Commission. It was part of our consent agenda that the city is replacing the city's park commission with our park advisory group. But really just wanna, um, extend a thank you for the time and energy those many volunteers, um, have put in, um, over the years. And that's all that I have for updates.
All right, thanks, Lori. I've got a little bit of a laundry list here. Carver Ridge celebrated its second Carver-iversary yesterday. It feels like they've been in our community forever, but it's good to have them here and help, uh, happy to celebrate their second anniversary. Since we last met, I did ribbon cuttings at our two new businesses in town. Both Peekaboo Baby, which is right next to, uh, City Hall down here, and then Strive Nutrition, which is up, uh, by the chiropractor up in Carver Square. Let's see, we had a Carver Business Alliance meeting, and we're trying to mix that up a little bit, where we meet at eleven thirty, I think it was, on Friday mornings instead of first thing bright and early. So that's great. I'm always a fan of not meeting first thing in the morning. We had a Carver County Leaders Meeting last week where we talked about policing in Carver County. And we had the Chaska Police Chief and then Sheriff Cameru present, um, just on all things policing, challenges, staffing, et cetera. I also have on my list, the Soggy Bottom Open was a really great event, and kudos to Christie and the Lions. We're really lucky to have a, a group that's so generous and comes up with really fun events with the sole purpose of donating money to those who need it in our community. So it was a gorgeous day. Glenn, it looks like your eyebrows have grown back. We sat next to the fire when it got a little hot towards the end there. So it's good to see that your eyebrows and your beard are doing okay. Let's see, last Monday, Chad was invited to go to Carver Elementary and to take a, uh, a snowplow truck up there and help teach second graders about the three phases of matter, and he was kind enough to invite me to accompany him. So, um, we laughed so hard at some of the kids, and it was cool to see where a second grader's mind is at. We had a really good suggestion, um, from one little girl in the very first class, that we should have our next plow truck be rainbow and glitter. So Chad is looking and he's getting some estimates to see if we can make that happen. But it was, uh, the, I wish I was taking better notes because some of the conversations and some of the stuff that those kids will share, including how much their parents weigh when talking about the weight of the plow in front of a, a snowplow truck, was absolutely hilarious, and Chad and I were in stitches for most of that. I think just a little over an hour that we were at the school. The Carver Lions invited me to present at their meeting last Wednesday, and I was able to give, uh, those folks an update on the City of Carver and all things that were going on. They were very excited to hear about some of the, the road projects. There are a large, um, large, large number of lions who live up in, I think it's Eagles Bridge, where we're gonna be doing some of our street improvements this year as part of our pavement management plan, so they were excited to hear that. I am fresh off of the League of Minnesota Cities Elected Leaders Institute. They've got the newly elected leaders program and then the advanced leaders, uh, program. And that was, uh, Friday and Saturday up in Plymouth, and it was really good. We had got a legislative preview. There was a panel on local media coverage. There was a crisis communications session, um, a session about negotiating and problem solving, and then a session about change. The League always does a really great job, uh, with those, with those seminars and conferences, and this was no exception. Um, and then the only other thing I have is that I'm having, uh, virtual office hours on Saturday via Zoom from nine AM to eleven. So it'll be a open house kind of, um, presentation, actually no presentation. So swing by, stop in and, uh, say hi. That is all I have for my updates. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion to adjourn.
You have a motion by Councilmember Henry?
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Deputy Clerk, can you do a roll call for the motion, please?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Christie Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks.